Good afternoon, everyone. Good to see everyone. And I guess we will go ahead and get started. So I guess we'll start with number one, which is page one, the K L N B contract of Ms. Deb Schindel. My favorite property management. Deb? Okay. Oh, Deb Schindel?
Ms. Schindel was on, Mr. Chair, I think that she just logged on, just as you called her name. You may want to call her again.
Okay. Deb Schindel, are you here?
Yes, sir. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. We will just call our favorite person, the property manager.
There you go.
I'm going to talk about this contract with K L N D.
Wonderful. Well, thank you for your time, everyone, this evening. The administration is requesting an approval of a contract with K L N B LLC to provide advisory and consulting services for real estate transactions. Example that we have is leasing and/or purchase land opportunities as an as-needed basis. The contract is a, will continue through the December 19th, '22, and will be renewed automatically for a one additional year with the option to extend the term by 90 days. And so this contract was, what we did was, we worked with purchasing and we utilized a contract that is from the city of Salisbury. And this contract is really a resource tool for the county. As, as many of you know, we have been looking for land for several projects, and this puts a tool in our tool belt to help us extend our opportunity and vision into some possible land acquisitions that the county may not be aware of currently. So this is a contract that we utilized again with the city of Salisbury. And I have some auditors' questions that they asked me, so I would like to give you some definition. It says, please explain what specific appropriation, the maximum compensation is limited, operating budgets, and capital budgets. So when they asked, when the auditors asked us, where does the money come from? If it is a procurement of land, traditionally, we use capital funding because it is over $5,000. And if it is a service that is under $5,000, where we're having them help us with a lease, then we would use some operating funds out of property management. So it really is a threshold of $5,000 and over is typically what the county uses. Obviously, anything that's purchased for the county is over the $5,000 and would be capital. And then the other question was, how much has the county extended, expended in recent years for outsourcing real estate services? And is the intent to maintain and modify that pace? So one of the things that, that I would like to explain to everyone is that we have always used informally real estate companies. And in particular, we use them for leases. So we would traditionally call anybody and everybody and say, hey, we want to lease a property in this particular community. Do you know of anything? And what happens in leases, as maybe many of you know, is that we have done that in the past, and we've had different real estate companies help us find property that we could lease from private owners. What happens is the fee for the company gets paid for, to the real estate company from the owner of the building. And so although the county has used real estate services before, we haven't really paid anything in the past and will continue not to pay in those circumstances because there is no charge to the county if we want to continue to have their assistance with finding leases, because all that gets paid to the lessor, to the realtor. One of the main tools that we really liked about this contract and we really wanted this contract is because, as I stated before, we have some new buildings where we are in search of some properties. And that's why we wanted to reach out and have a more formal agreement with a company so that we, if there was a situation where we needed a parcel of land in a community and they found, they could help us find it. And of course, then we would owe, we would have to pay them for that service. And that's traditionally what this service is for. It said, please explain why the county chose to piggyback on the city of Salisbury, Maryland contractor rather than conducting its own procurement. And going with procurement and best practices, purchases started to look at other municipalities. And as we started discussing some of the services that we may need in the future, they found this contract in a cooperative agreement. And this contract seemed to work and suit Baltimore County's needs. The nice feature is it is a local company with a local office here in Baltimore County, and it had everything that we felt we needed. So that includes my testimony. If you need anything else, please let me know.
Thank you, Ms. Schindel. Are there any questions or comments from the members?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay, just a quick question. So Ms. Schindel, so this would be, this consultant would be looking for, let's say, for example, open space that might, that we, that might not be aware to our communities or to the fellow council members?
Yes.
Or they do the appraisals and necessary work for acquisition, or both, all or both, or?
They have the capability of doing all. So traditionally, what has happened is we really wanted to get a contract with a real estate company to really identify some properties that we may be looking at in a community. We still work very closely with real estate compliance and will continue to do so, and they will still handle the formal acquisition of the property itself. So if we reach out and say, you know, we have a community, say in Pikesville, that we want to know if there's some opportunity, here's what the, what we're looking to do with it, considering it open space. Could you look around? And if you see anything, will you notify us? They, that is what we really are looking for their service for. I hope that answered your question.
Thank you. And I knew, I knew, Ms. Schindel, once you came to the second district, that you wouldn't want to leave.
That's right.
But thank you.
I'll keep looking. You're welcome, sir.
Are there any additional questions or comments? Thank you, Ms. Schindel.
You are quite welcome. Have a good evening.
You too. Move right along to page five. DeAndrea Walker, you have a contract?
Good afternoon, councilmen and members of the council. I'm chairman and members of the council. The administration is requesting approval of a contract with Accent Specialist Marine LLC. And this contract is to provide on-call, snow removal and salt application services. The contract, of course, will start November 1st, 2021, and continue through April 30th, 2022. It may be renewed automatically for an additional nine, automatically for nine additional one-year periods. Of course, the compensation is associated with the budget that we have for our snow season this year.
Any questions or comments from the members? There are none. Move right along. Walker to page nine. There's an amendment number two for the contract.
Right. Yes, sir. The administration is requesting a second amendment to a contract with Tito Contractors to continue to provide general and skilled labor services at the county's eastern land, landfill in White Marsh and our CAF, as well as our Western Acceptance Facility in Health Hope. This amendment adds a six-month renewal term that will start October 1, 2021. And this amendment states that the agreement shall be extended for a period not to exceed the earlier date that the county executes a new agreement on March 31st. So our goal is to have a procurement in place before March 21st, and this gives us time to do that. In addition, this proposed amendment increases the maximum compensation of the contract by $2.1 million. This contract will provide our skilled services at those three locations that we talked about earlier. In addition, these workers in particular do things like the sorting of our recycling materials on our single-string processing line. They also do groundskeeping and general labor tours for us at these three facilities. In addition, it is important to note that we did look at the three contractors that we currently, temp contractors that we currently have on place for these temporary services. But they were not able to identify the temporary personnel to replace the Tito's contractors, which caused us to have to come to you and ask for an extension of the current contract that we have in place. We currently have about 60 temp contracts. Twenty of those temp contractors are to replace the inmates that are no longer able to work at the, at the facilities that we have because of COVID. With that, I received a couple of questions from the auditors as well. The question, the first question was, does the department advise that the proposed second amendment is necessary to avoid interruption of the services as the county requires additional time to rebid for the provision of these services? What is the timeline for this and the status of that procurement? We've already started working with procurement. We hope to have that procurement awarded by January. The, the second question is, is the department is requested an additional $2.1 in compensation for the six-month extension period? The department advises that the increase in maximum compensation is to attribute to an increased number of temporary staff required primarily due to the loss of inmate labor, as well as the minimum wage increase that took effect, that will take effect in January. How does the pace of the spending compare to the budget for these services? And how have the total costs for such staffing grown in recent years? Again, the staffing has grown by 20 because we no longer have those inmates there, and it's a specialized service where they do the picking on the line for the recycling, where they take the recycling and separate it from the trash. And of course, we get revenue by separating that recycling from the trash. So there's 20 new employees there that we did not have before because we had to replace the inmates. In addition, my budget for temp, temp employees only went up from FY '21. It was $1.7 million, and for FY '22, it is $2 million. So it hasn't increased, it, it has not had a drastic increase. We just needed to add them to, we just needed to use this contract in particular because we could not find the services in the other contracts that we had. With that, I'll take any other questions.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Walker. Are there any questions or comments from the members? Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Walker.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you. You too. Now we move on to page 13. Colonel Jay Lansky, from the Police Department.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. So I am, I'm here to, to discuss the initiation of a new master agreement with Aviation Specialties Unlimited in reference to the maintenance for our 13 sets of night vision goggles for our aviation team. This is a one-year agreement with four automatic renewals, not to exceed $44,000 in the life of the contract. Our aviation team is required to maintain availability and airworthiness at all hours of the day and night and fly across our very large county. Some places are better lit than others, but at night, even in the brightest places, very difficult to navigate in the air without these night vision goggles, which essentially magnify or amplify ambient light, you know, flashlights, starlight, streetlights, and basically turn the lights on for our air crew and enable them to, to see the towers, cell phone towers, radio towers, buildings and other, other hazards. And obviously, we are a pretty busy area for, for air traffic. So in addition to all the operational capabilities that they, they offer us. But FAA regulations mandate that our night vision goggles are inspected semi-annually. So the 13 units in small numbers are sent back to, are sent to Aviation Specialties Unlimited in Idaho, Boise, Idaho, and they turn, turn those back around in five days, get them back in the hands of our, our team members after they've done their inspection and any repairs in a, in a timely manner. And all those repairs are to be up to the specifications of the manufacturer. Aviation Specialties Unlimited previously had the contract, which expired in July of this year. This went out for competitive bid, and the contract was renewed, was awarded to Aviation Specialties Unlimited, or they, they came in as the low bid. And that is the presentation. If you have any questions, that is what I have there about night vision goggles.
Thank you, Colonel. I had a question, I do have a question. I was curious about the 13, and it takes five days to turn them around. So I take it we have?
No, we, we don't, we don't send them all out at one time. We, we send a few at a, at a time, so.
Okay, so, excuse me. So we have, what, three per, four per helicopter?
Ideally, we will fly a, a three-person crew. We can, we can do it with two, but we ideally would like a, a three-person crew at all times.
And I mean, sometimes you have another pair in case you have another person?
Yes, sir.
All right. Any questions or comments from the members? All right. Thank you very much, Colonel.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move on to, let me see, Mr. Pete Gutball has three contracts, one called Title Search.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the county council. Yes, the administration is requesting approval of three contracts to provide various title searches, services for county projects on an as-needed basis. Each contract is for about two years and will renew automatically for three additional one-year periods. The compensation for all contractors combined may not exceed $60,000 for the entire five-year and four-month term. These services, the contractors will review and analyze all pertinent documents recorded in public records that may affect the title of the property in any way, including but not limited to land records, district and court, and circuit court records, registered wills, office records, assessment records, and local finance office records. If you have any other questions, that's my presentation.
Any questions or comments from the members? There are none. Thank you very much, Mr. Gutball.
Thank you.
Next, we have Ms. Marcia Williams, chief of housing pilot.
Good afternoon, Chairman and council persons. I'm here to request approval for lead remediation services. The administration is requesting approval for four contracts to provide lead remediation ser, services for eligible households through the county's Lead-Based Paint Hazard Reduction Demonstration Grant. Four contractors are Atmost Solutions Incorporated, Lewis Construction Inspection Experts, and Jones Enterprise LLC. Each contract commences upon county approval and will continue for two years and will renew automatically for one additional one-year period with the option to extend initial term or any renewal of term in additional 120 days. The compensation for all contractors combined may not exceed $1,257.825 for the entire three-year period. And we are serving households at 80% of median income or below. Are there any questions?
Any questions or comments from the members? Thank you very much, Ms. Williams. Thank you so much, Ms. Williams.
You're welcome.
And let's see here, page 16. Amy Mata, Director of Planning, Deputy Director of Planning.
I'm Amy Mante, Deputy Director of Planning. Thank you, Chairman and members of the council. We're here for recommending the approval of 12 applications and the ranking of those applications on a little over 1,000 easement acres by landowners to sell an easement to the Maryland Agriculture Land Preservation Foundation, known as MOUTH, for the FY '22 easement purchase cycle. 12 properties have 24 associated development rights that would be extinguished through those easements. I also have Megan Benjamin here, who managed the program, and she can provide a little bit of overview over, for the applications that were submitted.
Thanks, Amy, and good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of council. So as Amy said, we have 12 applications that descend onto the state. The Baltimore County Agricultural Land Preservation Advisory Board reviewed each of these applications, reviewed the farms based on a number of, and ranked them based on a number of factors, such as the contribution to the agricultural economy, the quality of the land, including the soils, the number of development rights, and the acres of contiguous protected ground, among other factors. And the 12 farms are listed in the application in alphabetical order. And there was a map that should be included in your information that shows the distribution across the county. Would you like me to go through the exact properties in any way, or if you have any questions, happy to answer them?
Cool. Would be, yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Yeah, very, very quickly, Megan, the goal for the county is 80,000 by next year acres. The number now is 67,000 plus. Does that include the 13 farms that are proposed for purchasing development rights? That are, or not?
So the, the number of permanently protected does not include those that have not settled yet.
Okay.
So all of these acres of these that are being proposed would go towards that goal.
Are there any others that haven't been completely settled yet?
Yes. So we still have a few of the, the state, the MOUTH program from previous cycles. So there is one that will be settling very soon from the FY '19 cycle. I think we have two that are settling imminently from the FY '20 cycle. And then we have six that just recently, this spring, received offers in the, from the FY '21 cycle from MOUTH. So all of those are still to close and still to be counted.
So do you think that we'll be knocking on the door of 69,000, or?
Uh, yes. I don't have the exact numbers, but yes, we'll be.
I, I guess the thing, to think that we'll, in one year, be able to get the 11,000 is being very optimistic. Or beyond optimistic.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the members?
Mr. Jones, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you very much. Ms. Benjamin, thank you for your presentation. Certainly, Baltimore County can be very proud of its land preservation record. I always tell people that when you drive through northern Baltimore County, you always know when you hit Shrewsbury, Pennsylvania, because all that green stops. I know when, when you and Director LaFerty came before us last, last year, there was some discussion about having more applications from other districts. Did we receive any other applications from districts other than two and three?
Unfortunately, no, we did not receive any additional applications for this cycle. And I know we shared that information with all of your offices, and thank you for helping to spread the word. Sometimes the outreach that we do, you know, it takes a while for people to make these decisions, to make such a commitment and to, you know, follow through and apply. So we, anything that we can do to spread the word now, hopefully, will continue to have benefits into the future. There is an upcoming outreach event. It will be at the Ag Center on October 21st. The full details are yet to be determined, but that is another opportunity that we hope to spread the word and get, you know, people interested and to hear what opportunities there are in Baltimore County.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman? Yes, I'm ready to hear.
Just want to comment on Councilman Mark's observation. He is absolutely right, having just made that drive from Upper County to Pennsylvania. You know you're in Pennsylvania until you get to upstate New York and.
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah, poor Pennsylvanians, you know, they, they just don't have it. And I think that the beauty of our county is equal to that of upstate New York and, and the more rural parts. And like I said, I've just made that drive. And so when you said it, it was fresh in my mind, Councilman Marks, and it's very, very true. So just wanted to share.
My, my mother's family is from Glen Rock, Pennsylvania, which is right over the line. So yeah, I know exactly what you're talking about.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Councilman Kent.
Yeah, I think it's interesting to note that the county that has the largest amount of land in preservation is Lancaster County, which really stumps me because when you drive through Lancaster County, I don't see the preservation. You know, I see motels, hotels, shopping centers, et cetera. So maybe I'm just in the wrong part of Lancaster County. But again, they're number one in the country. We're number five as far as land preservation goes. And so, but I think we're doing a great job. And when you take a look at northern Baltimore County, I mean, it, we've, we've preserved so much of it, which of course keeps the drinking water clean and, you know, there's so many advantages to it. So I appreciate the efforts of this county executive and those in the past. And, you know, let's, I know we're not going to make it to 80,000, but I think to, I bet we'll be at 70 next year, which I think is quite an accomplishment. So, and Councilman Patoka, please, if you're going to be in my district, please let me know. Because I, and Dave, Councilman Marx is, well, we can talk privately, but you just can't go into my district without my permission.
Getting my passport, right?
Good, yeah. And you still owe, you still owe, so.
We're waving the wave catch flag as we were driving.
Good, good. I missed you in Glendon. I was.
I got tied up at an event that went later than I hoped it would go.
Community of Glendon is 100, celebrating 150 years of preservation, and I was waiting to hear from Councilman Patoka to tell us what life was like for him in Glendon in 1890, but I was denied that opportunity, and I was really looking forward to it.
Well, in 1890, I would have been. Well, in eighteen ninety, I would have been in, if, if I had been around, I think I'd be on the border of Poland and Ukraine. But thank you for thinking about me. Carlos Gonzalez, a member of my team, I think was representing us in.
Yeah.
Beautiful community of Glendon.
It is. It really is a beautiful community, no doubt, so.
Well, let me, let me just say that, number one, thank you for your, all your observations. Let me guess, A, having been to Lancaster quite a few times, you know, development, in some cases, no matter where you are, follows the road. So if you go through Lancaster and you're on Route thirty or twenty or two twenty-two, you're going to see development. But if you go a couple of hundred feet off the road in the communities, you won't see them. So that being said, let's move on to page twenty-three, although I certainly agree with the comments. Let's move on to page twenty-three. Councilman Marx, you want to talk about the Perry Hall revitalization?
Absolutely. This resolution simply amends the Perry Hall Commercial Revitalization District. It moves it a little bit to the north. We will likely modify the map, but the intent here is not so much the revitalization tax incentives, but to allow for design review panel evaluation of any changes to this area. I have shared this map with the Perry Hall Improvement Association. I have not heard any opposition from them and I appreciate all of your consideration.
Thank you, Councilman Mark. Any questions or comments? There are none. Yes, this will conclude our work session today. I want to thank everyone for their participation. And thank you for taking us to Lancaster, Pennsylvania and down History Lane. And everybody have yourself a wonderful day.
Thank you.
Take care. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members.